Okay. Uh, the site plan approval for an 8-foot fence at 6810 Row Avenue. That's the avenue here.
Yes.
Last one.
I was disappointed.
They were gonna run off.
Thank you. David Royer, 6810 Row Avenue. Appreciate the time to be. Uh, we're looking for your approval, uh, just of, uh, what's generally a six-foot tall fence in areas, uh, there's going to be a retaining wall, uh, that the fence will sit on, and then there is a portion that is purely an eight-foot tall fence. Uh, when we looked at putting a fence in, uh, based on the location of the fence, uh, it makes sense to ask for that exemption, uh, to receive the six-foot tall fence. The positioning of the fence related to the property, uh, creates an area where we could ever use that space, uh, for playing. The driveway runs along, uh, Row. That's where the kids play basketball. They have a problem with balls going into the street. So, the ability to put a fence in that area is gonna be a best bet. As, as the staff recommendation stated, it's, the fence is generally gonna match the surrounding area. Uh, in the area where it ties into, uh, the neighbor's fence on the north side of our property, the neighbors existing fence is an eight-foot tall, so it would be matching that. Um, and, and there was, uh, there was also a, uh, a condition of, of approval, uh, related to drainage, uh, because of the retaining wall. Uh, you know, we feel that should be, uh, doable. I don't see any major issues as far as drainage, and I think we can work that out, uh, with public works, uh, at the time of building permanent, uh, the issue.
Um, Mr. Redmond?
Um, nothing to add, other than the, the portions of the fence of OVA are relatively minor. Um, as the advocate said, it's tiny and it exists in your fence. Um, and the portions that are on the retaining wall, um, meet the standards. Uh, the standard is that you measure from the upper portion of the wall, and so those are all six feet from the retaining wall. It's just whether it's tiny or deep. Uh, eight-foot vents are working for eight dips, the fence is larger, um, so those are relatively minor, um, things, and that's why it's before you. Um, but we have communicated with public works as well, and they spot a few things they want with that more posted on range, but didn't see anything that was in some amount of hole, and making, um, adjustments here or there to the location of, uh, being measured.
Does anybody have a question to the advocate then, or any concerns?
You, you were looking at over your quarter by who sent that?
So, so we're currently planting, uh, shrubs and trees in that area, kind of soften. Uh, that, we originally wanted to create, you know, a green barrier, uh, but that's gonna take a lot, and the walls are gonna keep moving.
Uh, there was one recommendation by staff. Um, did you read that recommendation, and do you agree with that?
The, uh, the drainage condition? Yes, yes, we agree with that.
Uh, in general, regarding BC 2016, that one 29, I move that we approve the, uh, plant for, the site plan approval of the fence. So, 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 to the staff.
Uh, it's been moved by Mr. Redmond, second by Mr. Burkle. Uh, do we need to note that we have, um, reviewed the criteria in motion?
Um, no, not for, this is just an exception in the vicinity, so, yeah.
All right. Any other concerns or discussion or questions? I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two and a half.
Thank you.
Thanks. Glad to see the family here.
We're missing one son.
Oh. He's by the desk also.
Yes.
All right. Um, you'll note in your pack at the 2017 meeting schedule, does anybody have any concerns about the dates that are set?
As noted, we have the January, September meetings that may only be postponed, uh, after I'm leaving for the holiday, um, July 4th, so, to be sure. And November 7th, as the meeting, uh, general election on November 7th, with Latin, including basically, uh, generally, National State Council, uh, the, uh, credit, uh, that, uh, to get hold for your future meeting, but if you want to change that one as well, and I'll pass the mission if I like to be there.
On the nights. If anybody has, I mean, we can always change it, ask if you're gonna follow, but that's too late.
There are no great problems, definitely, that I can.
Do you need a motion to accept the, uh, proposed schedule?
So.
Moved by Mr. Redmond?
Sorry.
Seconded by Mr. Burkle to accept the proposed schedule for 2017. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, last is the interpretation of accessory structure limits.
So, this is a few things that have been going on, and I think this impacts one building renovation that Mitch has for right now, and he's reviewing. So, we thought this would be a good chance to kind of get on the same page with you all, make sure you would read it the same as we do. Um, it involves a few things that aren't exactly clear and overlap, and we have to try to interpret. Basically, it's dealing with some of the, the limits on accessory buildings. Um, some of them, they get quite specific, the sort of high-tech buildings, and then when they're read together, they don't always make perfect sense. Um, so, basically, we've mentioned that. And it's, and it would be hard to make perfect sense of it. It's, it's not necessarily an easy thing where we can bring them in and go, hey, this won't be changed, because it's like anything, you pull on one string and something else comes. So, our thought was, well, if we're just reading this, if we explain it the way we're reading it, and if you all agree or concur or have some consensus that that's correct, and we're not missing something that we would need to, that we would necessarily amend, and we keep interpreting the ordinance this way. Um, but basically, the three sections that are printed there, just that according to what we're dealing with, and we looked at that and said that the overall one that's going to control how much building coverage a lot can have, um, whether it's accessory or principal building is in 30%, that's the one that just controls everything. And then, within that, we have two special types of buildings that may have further limitations because they are special types of buildings. Um, the first being the detached garage, which is limited to 570, or 576 square feet, and we're looking at that, that would be regardless of whether you're under the 30% or not. Um, and so, and, and an easy way to think of it is, that building is getting a special setback exception, um, so the three feet to the side and rear, so it's positioned back, so there's a reason for it limiting it. However, if a garage weren't taking advantage of that exception, and was, and was just in the regular building footprint, then our thinking is perhaps it could be over 576 square feet if it's under the 30% overall. So, it's merely a factor because that building type is getting placed so close to the lot that there's a further limit of up to only 576 square feet allowed. Um, the second one then is the storage one, and that's the one that really caused more problems, because it, it can read as if that's all you're allowed, and I think there have been some past interpretations that, that maybe that's what, what people were told, and that's the 10-by-12 storage shed. Um, if someone has one of those, can they have another accessory structure? And so, that's the question that we're dealing with right now. Um, a lot that's not close to its 30% coverage happens at the 10-by-12 storage shed, and then wants to put some other type of accessory structure out there, can they do it? And our thought is, yes, they can, provided that everything's still under the 30% of the lot coverage. Um, the way to kind of read that consistently is that the, the limitation of only one building, um, for the 10-by-12 storage shed is dealing with those sheds that you can purchase and buy, you can wanna have those all over some blocks, or you're lap one of them, and then everything else just kind of goes by the 30% coverage. Um, that's the way we reconcile those three sections, and we just wanted to make sure, um, you all thought we were thinking right on that. Um, the other related one that we tagged on, because it was, we had this a few months ago, um, was the requirement for a garage, whether attached or detached, and there's no real standard for what counts for garage or not, so, um, we've had a couple of applications where people were filling in, um, portions of a garage for rehabilitation, um, their home, plenty more interior space, and it got a little dicey, as to, well, do they still have a garage or not? The order is clear that you have to have one, um, there's a little bit of openness on what counts and what doesn't, um, so some people were hate-hat creative, and so we, we fell back on, um, the parking requirement, saying that nine-by-18 plus space to remove maneuvered cars, as long as you have that, we're gonna cap that space, and so that's what we were going with on that.
Um, do we need to take action on this this evening, or is this a, a pushing item?
No, it's just, um, I don't know, with, if you need, it's the way we're kind of interpreting it, and so we're looking for not necessarily formal action, just consensus, or if you have problems, you know, there, we could probably need to do something different. Um, so there's not necessarily any action required unless you are able to, maybe what else it shows, say that sounds, sounds good, um, or if we think we're incorrect, um, you probably would, you probably need to get back with the other advocate, I know you're drawing a whole thing, right?
Yeah, I love it. Two, build accessory structures.
Can you picture, mark a moment please? Thank you.
Right now, we have two, uh, plans in command. The real issue is, we have a nice 10-by-12 storage shed, and then they wanna build, uh, like a cabana with a pergola over top, detached structure. Common sense is, it looks good, but we're gonna fall back to, well, how many of these accessory structures are you allowed? You know, if we stay under 30%, well, then we're fine. If we view all these different structures as accessory structures, i.e., okay, does this mean we can have a detached garage, a detached shed, and say a cabana-type style of thing a lot, provided for we stay under the 30%? Or, or we count all these accessory structures to the degree of just saying, you can only have one of any of these types of accessory structures?
How many of these would you say, um, we're running into with more than one accessory building?
I would say I'd get one of these about one every three weeks at least.
Do I, I, I agree that with, uh, getting quite a few of these, only because I didn't understand this, uh, accessory structure to be a pergola or a cabana. I mean, to me, that, that does change, I think, I actually would not have even qualified that as really a accessory structure in the sense of, you know, a building of any sort. Then, I mean, we're talking about buildings, sheds, carports, garages. To me, a cabana or a pergola or trellis, I start going down the path of how, how much of a structure are those, or are those not?
Well, those, it is fuzzy. There is no definition of how they're counted. They traditionally are counted under the lot coverage calculations, and also, uh, on certain instances, pergolas drop, and drop them through the board, on setback issues to property. So, I mean, my mind kind of works every time something comes in, and I say, well, if this isn't approved towards lot coverage, does this mean I can take the entire yard and turn it into a loading pergola? There has to be some control factor. My mind goes in the direction of the 30% overall.
Would any of these pergolas, have any of them been not included amongst any lot coverage? Meaning that you just end up on a grass area that has, instead of, uh, some kind of solid concrete, that you're ready to actually purge this material, pergola on top, so would that be considered a coverage, or would it just be where the columns?
How I count it is, is the same as I count the footprint of buildings. So, if you have, as you say, you have smaller than four posts, I would take, when four posts was the foundation elements, so I would take whatever that is to take my calculation. Not necessarily the overheads, but to the caveat, so as they look at one foot feet, I'm gonna start counting, and tell them, right, that's four feet of overhead.
I think in general, I, I agree that the 30% should be the rolling factor. Uh, I agree, I would hate to see two storage sheds, two carports, two, you know, and, and I mean, so that seems to be clear logic that you're floating through. Uh, my, my only sticking point would be, you know, that we're, John, we're, you know, where, where do you start defining a structure, right, a more solid structure versus one that's a little, not, not that, not that solid, not, you know, doesn't have concrete underneath it or walls around it, and whether that should be counted?
Would that then be a variance or, um, special use permit to, to come back if it didn't fall within the guidelines that are proposed?
Well, at this point, it'd just be an interpretation matter, as to what's up with it, but there would be no changes, it would just be a reflection of the interpretation.
Well, I understand that there's cabanas that are solidly built, but also cabanas that are just more like tent-like, uh, with, uh, canvas sides, so...
I've seen inquiries through structures like that, like building portions, um, are, are counted as half, if there's no wall. Uh, I, I'm just trying to throw out some things, because we look at a 10-by-10 pergola, four columns, and count the whole thing, that's a lot different to me than a 10-by-10 structure.
Like a tough shed?
Like a tough shed.
Right.
So, I think the, just throwing that out there, is a, how do you calculate the size of an open wall structure if it was counted by half, and of course, some other calculation might allow that type of structure? Because I can see somebody have a pergola, a secondary structure, shed, but I do think there's a number of how do those things should be counted by half.
Is the, is the question that's coming up, the number of structures or the size? I, you know, to me, allowing one accessory storage facility and one detached garage is fine, you start getting rules with that, and I, I'm interested.
Yeah, and the, the question they have for the ones that weren't so described, and then it was like, well, does that limit, particularly the storage shed one, does that limit mean you used up all your accessory structure, and you're kind of saying that didn't make sense? So, that qualifier really applies to just the fact that it's a storage shed, um, or it, or it's, well, the way it's written, it says used for storage, and so we, we were kind of going through, well, you have a detached garage, it's used for storage, and so that's what we kind of interpreted. What that section's really getting at is the, kind of the off-the-shelf storage sheds, you get one, other accounts is controlled by the 30%. Um, the other thing, the openness ones, we did have an application, uh, maybe several months ago, where someone was going in over the 30%, um, it was over on Somerset, I believe, and so all of those considerations of, well, it's, it's an open structure, and it was a back pergola off the patio, so those were kind of considered as part of the exception for going over the 30%.
Maybe not back up to 112 or an open area rather than that.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Those things said in first, we didn't have the category.
There was one there, yeah, that extension predated me, but that was going on as well.
Yeah.
They're talking right there.
Yeah, mine's still being built.
Yeah, mine.
Yeah, that was a little of a view, but at the same time, it's an open structure.
Yeah, it was, that was, you also view if you're not a person, it's actually, to that point though, um, you're talking about the pergola, which would typically be an actual solid wood structure. If it is more of a trellis element with joists, you're saying that that also, you would typically say, oh, it was a structure.
And so, structures are accounted, and then what's the last?
So, is what I'm wondering, is open air structure what we call?
Yeah, I would have thought of an open structure, you know, just like more of a Joyce-type trellis.
Those are traditionally always been counted under the lot coverage calculations, and I don't think they did to...
Well, they usually have a concrete pad underneath them.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, and they're all restructures.
Yeah.
Once you get on time to define between one that has a solid roof and one that has a trellis, then I think we're really creating some murky water.
My, my sense of grace is that you, you describe it as the plain reading of what's written, which is 30% coverage, and you can have, you can have 30% one garage, 576 square feet, and one storage building of 10-by-12, and then anything else that you provide is subject of the 30% coverage. If that makes sense to me, it's, it seems pretty clear, that's what I...
So, do you wanna look at it as it is, and see how it goes, and, um, if we have any, um, people who are complaining, maybe come up for a special use permit, I guess, or some type of variance, yeah, depending on what they wanna put up? Is that how it would be handled? Would you see that being handled that way?
Yeah, I think, I think this reading may actually, I don't think we'd have as many of them with this interpretation.
I don't think it would really be, look at the past, more of two of these different types of accessory structures would be problematic.
Yeah, I would think so.
But, there's always...
There's always that exception.
As soon as we say...
Never, ever, never say never.
But in the under this, you could have two sheds, 10-by-12.
No.
No.
One shed. Max 10-by-12. Could have two six, five-by-sixes, I think.
You could build, um, an accessory building for storage within your 30% and have your shed, but you could have two sheds.
That's what I was getting at, right? One shed being determined as accessory building, in the same size as a shed.
If it was attached to the garage, 10-by-12.
Well, that's what we're saying on the, the, the limit on the shed, the only way to kind of read them all together is, that's a limit on the, there's no definition of what a storage shed is, but by that number, and that's where you go to the store, and that's the one that's sitting there in the box of the body, so that's the, what we'd be interpreting that as one thing. If someone builds another type of accessory building through the building renovation process, that was being used for storage, that could be done.
And since storage is a building, they're...
Right.
And it's, it's like, since storage building, so, I think the intent is that you don't have large storage buildings in your property.
Or 15.
Yes.
But you could certainly have a storage building, a detached garage, and a pergola or a zebow or a patio park.
Provided for you going to 70.
How can the other cities nearby handle this?
Um...
I mean, I'm sure Leewood has a pretty restrictive...
Yeah, that's, that was the one I was, I don't know theirs, um, as well. Um, I would have a feeling that it's fairly signed to it in most cases. Um, not, maybe not the shed issue, but, um, unless you have a common pattern of detached garages, usually the accessory building provisions are very minimal at all, and it's just the setbacks control everything, um, in most cases.
Do you wanna make any changes to the wording, or accept it as is? Maybe a motion that we accept the wording, so it's on the record, that...
I'll make a motion to accept the wording, yes, status, out.
From the section of the... Moved by Mr. Burkle, seconded by Mr. Redmond. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, so, I guess we'll see you, that's, that's about it, or do you have anything you wanna talk about next, for next one?
Um, next one, though, the Gower has it, um, we will have Betterwork 2020 building in for their final development plan, with the condo, the condo, um...
Um, for the, for the whole six?
That's it.
Six in a class.
Um, BCA, unless the survey come out, we'll be nominated, which is kind of, okay, but then...
The other big thing is, uh, Melbrook, um, the, uh, new activity centers will be coming in for site approval. Um, what, what we are going to likely do, and we'll send something to you, is that this kind of flows into the Park Master Plan, that you were limited to really the site plan for the new activity center, and so, we had a meeting the day that went beyond the time that I thought it would take to go through it, and so, what we're going to do is provide, uh, an avenue for you to see the Park Master Plan. They're coming to the November 21st council meeting to introduce it to council. It's going to the Park Board November 16th, to our council, as an update, these are what we're looking at for some of the structures for the pavilions and things like that, that is not required, uh, through a by the management. And so, then, when you get the, uh, site plan for the new activity center, you would've had an opportunity with the campus and the council, maybe to see what all the new updates are, through the site, and where they're, what they're doing, and what, um, the progress you're making. And so, anyway, uh, instead of regurgitating the entire Park Master Plan, it's been approved by this body, so you can see the continuation of it, um, developing to be better efficiency at time, and, uh, we just limited the discussion to the site plan approval for the activity center. That captured everything we talked through today. So, I'll send that out to you, and, uh, that's going out to the department soon. So, the, the current structure will probably be coming out sometime in December.
SGP, they don't offer the, um, tower behind us, I mean, somehow they should know. SGP is up, you know, no changes to it at all, tower, that capacity, so it's just... I don't get levels, right? So, it'll be updated on the 30th.
We've told them to, Shannon's looking through, we've got some differences, openings about when the SGP expires, because there's three different carriers on it, so, we're trying to wait through that. Some of these contracts are coming up where we build a, a place that's, uh, for 25 years, and so, lots changed since that tower was built, and so, we're dealing with old contracts and trying to figure out the direction we're going with the new ones, and so...
The, 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 the city property?
Yeah.
I thought they, we had something, SGP on, and we moved...
It could have been a different carrier, which would have just been a site plan, because the secondary carriers don't have to go on SGP, they just get site plan, their primary carrier has SGP.
Yeah, there's been some language that, uh, one of the applications, like, sprint the site plan was approved in 2019, I assume the SGP, especially these permits, we're trying to tackle when it actually expires, so... It's, yeah, it's, it's, it's a little confusing, and so, we're, it, it's a document that's passed through several bands, and some of the cases are by your toll, so...
Anything else? And do I have a question for the juror? Brennan, Mr. Burkle? All those in favor, say aye. Thank you.